Resolution 2012-332, appointing an individual to fill a vacancy on the Clarion Borough Council.
Mr. President, if I adopt, I move to adopt resolution 2012-332, appointing Jamie Simpson for the vacancy in the Clarion Borough Council.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's open up discussion.
Yes.
Shocked.
Let's open up discussion.
I thought that was a committee. Are we hearing the committee report?
If I may, my understanding is that a meeting was held last night according to what had been discussed. Apparently, there was some error on my part as to whether or not that meeting needed to be advertised. I haven't gone back and reviewed my email yet, but apparently that was not advertised, nor was the press allowed in during the questioning of the potential candidates. Therefore, the only way to cure that is to, one, go back and re-interview the candidates at an open meeting after it has been advertised, or it can be cured here tonight by not making any type of recommendation and proceeding to vote on potential candidates.
Why this needs to come off the agenda then? We want an open meeting. No.
I think, Dr. Sanders Day Day, we have an open meeting right here, and I think we probably should go ahead and discuss the different candidates. I don't think we should move for one candidate. I think we should look through the candidates that we have, and let's take the merits of each candidate as they are, and let's discuss them.
I can agree with that, but I cannot agree to one person being nominated when a committee was assigned, and if there's something wrong with that meeting being held, then we need to go back and rectify it so that we don't get in the same kind of issues that we had before.
You can definitely do that. The only thing is, your 30 days will run on your ability to appoint someone.
Then would we have to have a special election?
No, my understanding then is it would go to the vacancy board, and then if they do not appoint someone, then it would go to the judge of the court of common pleas.
I move that we table the motion to nominate Jamie Simpson for the open council position until we can discuss all the candidates.
I guess my one question would be, is Jamie Simpson one of those candidates that was discussed last night?
It doesn't matter whether they are or not. We can't say.
Okay, then I table that and start over.
Can you second the motion?
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion to table. I've got a second. Any discussion? Any discussion on the table?
If we're going to open this up and we're going to discuss everybody, we need to discuss everybody. No offense to Mr. Simpson, we shouldn't just put one person into place. That's not the correct way of doing it. We just talked about openness. Here it is. Choose your votes.
Mike, I guess my question to you, John, is how can we get back to where we have an open discussion on the subject?
We have to vote on tabling that motion, and then it can be discussed if that motion is tabled.
Okay, so we're voting on the motion to table the subject so we can have basically an open discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
Would be set that way? It would be a normal council, different council meeting?
No, right now.
No, why not right now?
Right now?
Yes. Do everybody here on council even know who the members were that came last night and spent their time to hear us, Dr. Sanders Day Day? Do you know who was?
From the minutes, I know who was assigned to that committee. I don't know who was there because I did not attend.
Mr. Zerfoss, are you aware of all the candidates that were there last night and their viewpoints?
I was aware. I was on your committee.
I understand that. I know the answer to the question already. Do you know all the information about all these candidates?
I wasn't at your committee.
I'll take that, sir, as a no. So how could we possibly vote on that if some of the members of council aren't even aware of the people and their qualifications?
Does anyone need to see copies? I have it.
Of the campus.
I think we need to vote here first. Call the question or whatever. Get that vote so we can do this.
Okay. All in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's tabled. We can discuss.
Here are all of the letters.
If anybody would be care to care to look at them.
This one can be given to Brenda.
I think I have nothing written.
This one can be given to I. And dude needs a copy as well. Chuck, do you have it?
I had copies.
Oh, you did?
By the time to read all that, yes.
Okay.
The letters from everybody? Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. I had them.
All right, well, if we're going to discuss this, I looked down through this information. I read everybody's letter that submitted and read all the information that they submitted to us to be able to look at these choices, and there was a clear winner in my mind, and that would be Kristen Clark. She showed a tremendous amount of presence last night at the...
You can't discuss that.
Looking at her resume, she has experience in these areas. She has been a borough manager according to the resume that I have. She has, well, I don't have it in front of me anymore. It's hard to remember all the things she did because it was a good resume, but she has experience in municipal government. She sat in negotiations with people. She has experience specifically in these areas that we're talking about here now. When I read her resume, hers was above everyone else's. Everyone else had a really excellent letter that they brought forward to us, and it was interesting reading. But when I look at the paper that I had in front of me, I think Kristen Clark did an excellent job of presenting herself on that piece of paper. I think she should be the one that we would put in place, and I would like to hear some other people that were, I would like to hear from some other people that have read the letters.
Well, I read the resume, and quite frankly, neither one of these two people were my choice. Nothing against either one of you.
Choice when, Mrs. Lopinto?
Right now, after I read the letters.
Thank you. Thank you. Who were your choices and why?
Elaine Moore was my first choice.
May I ask why, please?
Yes. My second choice would be Jamie and Kristen, although I'd have another position for her, but I thought Elaine brought stability to this council, and she had the experience to come in and sit down and let's move forward. That was, that...
I think I know what you're going to say, so. And while I agree, and I admire Mrs. Moore very much for her contributions to this community, I think when we're looking at somebody with an educational background, with the demographic that our borough is looking to try to promote, with children in our area, with an interest in the pool and the community things that are going on, I think that far and above puts Mrs. Clark ahead of anyone else, to be frank with you, although everyone did an excellent, that was excellent reading. I apologize. It was excellent reading on those letters. She has the combination of things we need today, now. Did you read, you can't vote, but can you comment? She's read the letters. Can she comment?
As far as I can, I don't, I think she's part of the conversation.
As Jason said, everyone answered the questions great, but I want you to know each...
What were the questions?
Oh, sorry, sorry. In reviewing the applications, it's above and beyond. I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's something that, since this is supposed to be open, that they're able to see them themselves as far as the public goes, the information that we received, if it's public.
Absolutely.
As soon as Earl's finished with it, you can take a look, but it is a clear indication of who the candidate should be, and my concern, being in charge of the police department, is the contract that's getting ready to come up and the experience that Mrs. Clark has in dealing with that situation. I just think that it would be a mistake if we did not consider her as, as the new council member, and if anyone's finished with their copies, I feel it necessary that the public sees these only because of what we're trying to stress here and based on what's coming down the road. I'm not saying that no one else could handle the situation, but I just feel with her experience, it's above and beyond, and we would be honored to have her on our council.
I think the letters that we reviewed, there were so many good candidates.
Very.
I agree. I think anyone could, anybody's letter I read could have filled the spot nicely, but I think the best candidate would be Mrs. Clark. They all could do it, but the best one clearly was Mrs. Clark. I think even Mr. Clark would agree with that. And I believe it. Thank you.
Mr. Bartley?
I mean, oh, I'm glad all eight stood up, sent us information, or just sent us their name. Not all sent them letters is my issue here. There's two that did not send a resume or nothing. I mean, we didn't require it. We didn't ask for it. My thing, if we're going to make a decision, we need everybody to send us the resumes or send us the stuff. I mean, if we can't go off of what we did last night, then I want all, everybody to have the same equal opportunity. Send me the paperwork. Because I don't have one for any of these two.
I have a question.
Okay.
Looking at this information and considering what was said at the last meeting, I don't, and I, Mr. Simpson, excuse me, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about process and procedure. There, I see nothing in this information from Mr. Simpson.
That's what I'm saying. Well, and Mr. Steiner?
Setna.
Setna, I'm sorry.
Jack Treese.
Jack Treese and David Anthony just have little snippets. I mean, I'm not getting the whole picture of everything.
But we didn't require them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if that's what you're telling me I got to base this off of?
I don't know. I'm just trying to...
I think we should, they should all be on the same playing field. I mean, if we're going to go off of resumes, let's use everybody's resume.
Then our 30 days are up.
Well, I'm just telling you how I feel.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Bartley?
Sure.
If you had to rate the people that we have resumes on, who would you pick and put as your number one person? Who, when you read those resumes, who do you think was most qualified?
With what resumes I have right now, Mrs. Clark. What I got in front of me, but I don't have everybody else's.
And that's a fair point. That's a fair point. And Mr. Simpson's the only one who is here who we don't have a resume from.
Well, there's not a letter or anything here.
A letter or anything yet. Any written information?
There's not a resume for several people.
Well, again, when we put it out, we just said, contact us and we'll give the list and do...
Process and procedure.
Brenda, when we asked...
Process and procedure.
Very simply, we said, let us know if you're interested. Yes.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Yes.
The people that want to be on the committee or on the council and that are here, talk to them. It'd be open meeting. It'd be open discussion. Everybody'd be on the same playing field.
And I think that's a wonderful idea, but everyone's not here that was on the list. I think is what the bugaboo is going to be.
Well, then they must not have wanted to be on.
Yeah, not, no.
Because that was, that was what was discussed, if you wanted to be...
But they, yeah, I, yeah, I think they do. If, if they sent a letter or some indication that they had a desire to do this.
They needed to be appointed tonight, correct?
No, we still have until, technically, we have till, if you're looking at the book, we have a little bit of time.
How much time do we have?
The resignation was, when Sue did this, I don't believe, it's 30 days, it was dated, I think maybe the second.
They accepted it on December 21st.
They accepted it?
The council accepted her resignation on December 21st.
And we have to...
We have, we have till Saturday.
Oh, wow. But I think we have to make a decision tonight. No way. Then what we need to do is consider the information that's in front of us because that's what we have in the timeframe that we have to make it.
Well, but unfortunately, when we told everybody, we said, please contact us if you're interested, and then we thought that the process had gone through. So, I mean, to me, I'm trying to be as fair as possible. I think, if we would have advertised on that, that would have been different, but we did not do that. Is, is, I guess, you know, I'm trying to think out loud here. I mean, since we only have till Saturday, now Saturday, you know, I hate to do another Saturday morning. Could we do something before Saturday, John, and then come back Saturday just to do that?
The committee has, is making a, I mean, what does the committee say? We can't say anything. There is no committee. It's no longer exist.
Those several hours we spent last night are null and void.
Again, I think somebody needs some rules around. I think that's the first thing we need to do is set some house rules, and I'm not understanding how we are missing all these important points that we keep missing. How could you miss that you had to advertise this?
That could have been my error. I haven't looked at the email, you know, that I sent to Linda about whether or not the meeting had to be advertised, and if...
Well, I would think that all public meetings that involve citizens and the community have to be advertised.
That was my understanding. That's what, and that's why I don't have my email in front of me. I'm going to go back and look at it, but if I sent that, it was an error.
Mr. Zerfoss, could I have my copies of the information we do have, please? Thank you. Are you finished, Earl?
The, to be legal, if we would do, again, I know this is disheartening to do something. Is there, do we have to advertise it? Like, what does it do to get into Derek? One day? So we'd be legal?
People need to see those.
One day? Is that?
24 hours.
24 hours. Could, could we advertise it basically tomorrow, have the committee re-meet with some of these folks, you know, like Friday or even Saturday morning, and then have a meeting right after? I'm just throwing out suggestions to try to be as fair to everybody. You know what I'm saying? I'm really going out, I know it takes up a lot of our time. I feel bad for the folks that's done this, but I'm just throwing out to be as fair as possible. Yes, Jennifer.
If I could, real quick, being one of the people who did turn in a letter, but not a resume, so my mistake there. And this is always strictly my opinion from what I have learned of Mrs. Clark and talking to her. I am more than happy to take my name out of any future running because of all the people, I think she would just be amazing. From what I do know of her, one thing, another thing I do like, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, I don't think she has any close ties to anybody currently on the council, which is, I think, a wonderful thing.
I didn't meet her until last night.
She's, she's local, but she's been places. She's had great experiences working in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that she can bring back to our town. She does have the children. She does have all the, all the things that I, I was hoping to bring. She brings plus so much more, and as one of the people who had my name in the running, I am more than happy to step back if it makes things easier to help whittle down that list that a possible candidate would need to work on, because I, of all the candidates, all wonderful people, but getting some fresh viewpoints, getting some intelligent, educated, experienced person up there is, 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 is...
It's the only logical choice.
I'm all behind that.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
I just have a question and process here. Now, you're speaking of advertising for a committee meeting, and then the committee will meet and discuss these people. Then will the committee recommend the choice? What is the process there?
That was the hope of what we were trying to do. We're hoping that we could interview. The committee would come with one or two folks and say, these are my candidates, and that just didn't quite happen. So what I'm trying to say, to be, well, what I'm trying to do is, again, I hate to do this, but would it be logical and fair to everybody that we try to do this again Saturday morning, interview the, interview the folks, the committee can interview them, come back with a recommendation, we'll have a special council meeting right after the committee?
I think it has to be before Saturday. I think it needs to be tomorrow. I think it needs Friday. It needs to be...
Well, we got to advertise for 24 hours.
For 24 hours, so that would be tomorrow, so it would be Friday, you know.
Friday afternoon, whatever.
Whatever we need to do.
Not your issue, but I have to work on Saturday.
7:30.
The ad won't appear until Friday's paper.
Oh, it won't go until Friday's paper?
Well, no, it doesn't have to be in the newspaper. It has to be advertised publicly, correct?
Has to be advertised in the newspaper.
In the newspaper. Why is that particular media picked as the way that it has to be done? No offense.
It's the law. State legislature.
And there's no other way to do it other than, and what happens if your paper doesn't come out, again, no offense, every day to be able to conduct business so quickly here?
It can't be posted at the board office?
No, that's a...
It's the Derek. It comes out in front.
It's too late to get it in the Clarion News for tomorrow.
Is it fair, Mr. Slistor, for me to say that I have spoken with each one of the people that are on this list that we've considered? Is it fair for me to say I have spoken with each one of these people?
Yes.
I have spoken with each one of these people on this list, and clearly, in my, clearly, in my opinion, Mrs. Clark was, as Mrs. Vincent said, far and above the other candidates. And that's based not just on paper, and you know what I mean, Chuck, when we sat, talking to those people, she was clearly the person I think should do that, and I think we don't need to wait.
Okay.
I, can I make a motion then?
Well, could, could we hear from Mr. Bartley, because they have spoken?
Mr. Bartley has also spoken with the people on the list.
With everybody on the list. Could you tell us, Mr. Bartley, what your feelings are?
Well, spoken to everybody on our lists. All eight are great. All eight would fill the seat. All eight would bring something to the council. There's, it's a tough choice to make. I mean, we have eight great candidates. Whether you don't think you are Dan or not, after speaking with you, I still think you would bring something to the table. I look at it as this way. What does the borough residents want? Not what do I want? That's what I'm here to do, is represent the borough residents. When I went through the interview last night, well, as I spoke to those people, I took it as more of a business side. I was looking at it as business. If I was running my business and I needed an employee, I know who I would grab in a heartbeat, but I don't know if the borough employee or borough people would actually vote because they don't know her that well. I hope she gets to be known very well.
Who would you pick, Mr. Bartley? If you were running your business, who would you pick? I'm sorry.
Run, finish this.
I'm sorry.
If I was my, being a businessman, I would have picked Ms. Clark. I would have picked her up in a heartbeat. She is a gold mine. But as a borough resident, I don't know if she'd make it very well in the election because she's not well-known.
Just, just let them speak. We all have a chance to speak.
My other, I mean, my other outstanding one was Jamie Simpson. I talked to him. He represents the borough. He wants to take care of the people. They're all great candidates. I mean, you're asking me to pick one? Be the guy? It's tough to do. I know, but it's a tough decision.
If you were to give your recommendation, who would you recommend?
I would recommend right now the way everything, I mean, I lost sleep last night over it. I've lost today thinking about it. I'm here to represent the borough. I'd probably pick Jamie Simpson because I think that's what the citizens would pick.
No.
This, Carol, you have spoken to these folks.
I've spoken to them and, no, nothing, you know, I've got your, I got my eye on you for something else, but I've never spoken to you about anything. Neither one was my first choice. My second choice was Jamie.
Actually, it was Jamie and Kristen. They were tied.
Let me check my little things.
Because you said either one would work in that position as number two.
Is that what it said? I don't know. I have...
Would you let Mr. Simpson see the resume, please?
No, I have Elaine with three, Jamie with two, or no, actually Kristen with two, because I did mine by circles. But like I said, and my candidate, I, it's my understanding she withdrew her name anyway.
I was not aware of that. So what you're saying is?
That's why I was...
One of the people, one of the people on the list has withdrawn her name in this, we're having this whole long discussion, and now we just found out that somebody withdrew their name?
That was my understanding.
Wouldn't that have been a piece of information that would have been nice to know as we started this conversation?
I didn't know.
I'm not picking on anybody. I'm just saying that would have been a nice thing to know. Okay.
So Elaine is no longer a candidate for council?
That's why I went to Jamie.
Oh.
That's why you went to Mr. Simpson. I see. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
In the process of the interviews last night or whatever...
No, we haven't had an interview.
Oh, the meeting did not happen at all?
No.
You just looked at paper?
Yes.
No, the meeting did not, we just...
Did not officially happen because we did not follow the sunshine law?
I don't see anything in here for Mr. Simpson. I'm sorry. I, I, I mean, if I, if you want me to look at him, I need to see something. I see nothing for Mr. Simpson. And again, it is not against you. It's against process and, it's process and procedure.
And I'm sorry, I don't see how someone can sit up there and say they're speaking for the citizens of the borough and who they would vote for. He, he knows who they would vote for. It, it comes across, I don't, I don't know. And, and, and how do you really judge that? And I'm going to go back to before the election and being at debates and people asking me about the various candidates, just did I know them? Did I know anything about them? And there was a candidate I could say I did not know a single thing about because he hadn't been at the debates, and I didn't know who he was. I didn't know anything about him. I, so I had nothing to offer as far as who he was, what he did, and, but yeah, he's going to sit up there now and tell me that he knows what the voters want. And then the voters voted for him because he was on one side of the aisle and I was on the other. That I find very insulting to sit up there and tell me that you know what the voters would do, in Kristen's case.
Okay.
I'm a voter. I'm a voter.
Okay, progressing on here.
So what is our, what is our decision?
My understanding is that currently there, it's, it's open for discussion. A motion would need to be made to close the discussion unless you want the discussion to continue.
And what will we do after we close discussion?
Then a motion would need to be made to bring Mr. Zerfoss's original motion back on the table, or an additional motion could be made at that point in time.
Does there have to be one, does one have to precede the other one?
No.
Do you claim that, that can not be two nominations in one motion?
You can't be. You can't do that because you only have to vote yes or no on one thing or the other.
Can you vote by name? I mean, isn't that the way school boards do that? I mean...
I believe, can you?
You can nominate more than one, you, okay, if the floor is open for nominations, you can nominate more than one person.
Yeah, we did that, you and I against each other.
And I'm not saying that that's, but you can, if the floor is open for nominations, you can nominate more than one person for a position.
What you're talking about are two different things. One is the president of council, which you are voting on between yourselves and the majority vote wins. In this instance, you're talking about appointing someone to fill a council seat, which has to be done by a motion, a second, and a majority vote of council. You can't do, you know, it has to be a majority vote of council or the quorum that's here. Okay? It can't be just a majority vote, you know, three to two or something like that. Somebody has to get four votes to be on council.
See that again?
Somebody has to get four votes.
No, no, I heard that part, the part before that part, about how many we need to have and...
You can only have appoint one person. It has to be done by motion, a second, and then a majority vote of council. You can't nominate two people because they may not get a majority.
A majority vote would be, define that for me, please.
My understanding is that there are currently six people, I'm sorry.
Six council members.
Yes.
Six council members, so the majority is four.
Doesn't Andrea break ties?
Well, I do, but if it's a majority vote, there's no need for a tie, it would have to be three-three, for me to break it.
I, I might be really stupid, and, and I usually am, but you're talking about two people who are in this room.
Yes.
Some questions. Adam stand up there and have a little town forum debate, let's go.
That's up to you guys.
Pretty sure everybody knows my view on it, so.
Yeah, I think everybody's viewed pretty clear. It, it doesn't matter.
If, if council doesn't feel that that's appropriate, then we have one of two choices. We can move, make a motion to close discussion, somebody can move to bring the previous motion on the table, or somebody can make a motion to, um, nominate an additional person that needed to be seconded, and then a vote will be called.
Can we ask them if they'd like to say anything?
You can do that, you can do whatever. Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, we're just doing the discussion mode right now, so until we have a motion to close discussion.
Because there have been some good ideas of points.
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't heard anything, nothing against Mr. Simpson, but I haven't heard any qualifications.
Would the two of you?
Yeah, I've heard them, I don't smell, and write.
But again, I'm trying to be, when we said.
Trying to be fair.
Well, yeah, in all fairness, it was not stated you had to have a resume, it just, it was the.
He just said, contact us, and then sometime we would bring you into chat and talk.
Right, but we have a council member who has stated that he thinks he knows how the citizenry would vote, and I just looked at the information available that you guys have, and there's absolutely zero information available about one of the people that put their name in, so I couldn't possibly want him for anything, since I know nothing about him. I mean, do you see what I'm saying? I mean, you have to look at the evidence in front of you.
This is why he's saying it's process and procedure, it's process and procedure.
And I think Mrs. Clark has a wonderful idea, because.
Absolutely.
I think Mr. Clark has a wonderful idea, and. You wanna come up with this wonderful idea? If, if, I think, Jason, I think the best thing is to, uh, let them stand up, tell us about themselves.
I think that's fantastic.
I would move for close of discussion. No, it has to be.
No, we have to just shut them before we let them talk.
Are we going by, anybody's rules here, or are we just going by what you tell us?
Well, my understanding is.
What hap, the way you run a meeting and legal procedure, are they different?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, are we going by rules here, or are we doing whatever we wanna do, and what you tell us to do?
You're always welcome to ignore my advice.
Because you told us you needed to close discussion before we moved forward, now you're saying, no, you don't have to.
No, discussion, they want discussion to continue, they want discussion to continue. That's what was proposed, was these two individuals to stand up and speak, and say what they have to say. If you wanna move to close it, you're welcome to do that, and then you, the, uh, motion, or Mr. Walters would ask for a second.
Do, do you wanna move to close it, Brenda? I've given you the opportunity.
If you're saying that we have to hear from them before we close it, we want to hear from them. If you're saying that it's a whole.
That is what we're saying.
That's not what you said at the beginning.
The point we're at now is, is we're ready to hear the people speak, and we're all agreed we wanna do this, correct? Please, the two of you, come on up here and talk, or arm wrestle or something.
And in this ring, where.
I know, right?
Sell yourself.
Jamie, I'm pressing. Go ahead.
I guess, I, I don't really know which audience I'm addressing, I don't know if I'm addressing this audience, or this audience back here, but I do have to tell you this, and maybe this audience is probably my best audience. I've been in business for twenty years. I grew up at Clarion High School, I know, exactly. And I've been president of Little League for three years, I'm an active community member, my kids go to school here. I love Clarion, this is my life, this is what I do. I, I don't know what other qualifications you want from me, other than I'll be committed to the borough. If, if you wanna hear that I'm going to be in your best interest, that's what I'm gonna be. You need to talk to me, you have a question, you need me to do something for you, I, I'll shovel your snow, whatever you need me to do.
That might be a union issue.
That might be a union issue. I, I'm here to help. I, I'm just like any other person that, that, that lives in the borough. If someone asks you to help, you're here to help, and, and that's what I'm here to do, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Well, my name is Kristen Clark, as I'm sure you've all heard, fun fact. I also grew up in Clarion, I actually grew up right in town on Fourth Avenue, but I lived on the township side, so I graduated from Clarion-Limestone High School. Um, after high school, I did move away to go to college and get some professional experience, and moved back here about four years ago. I also have a family, I have a four-year-old and an almost two-year-old. Um, right now, I am the Human Resources Director for Service Access and Management, the company that took over, um, mental health and mental retardation from the county. Prior to that, I was the Human Resources Director at Clarion County, and I've had other jobs. Um, I worked for the Borough State College for four years, I was the Township Manager of Harris Township, which is just outside of State College, for two years. And, um, I also am very interested in trying to save the borough pool, I live very close to it, within walking distance, so, you know, I'm interested in that, and another thing that I'm interested in gaining my assistance to, besides just making this community a nice place where residents with families wanna live, is, with my background in human resources and doing contract negotiations, hiring, because I've been a manager before, I'd like to be able to offer those services to the borough, you know, as we move ahead, and if we decide we want another township manager, because, you know, otherwise, that might be expertise they'd have to seek elsewhere and pay someone else to do, so, you know, I'm here, I'll work for the community, just as Jamie said, um, he has been here lifelong, he probably has more civic experience than I do. Um, I also serve on the board of directors for the Clarion Area Agency on Aging, so I do that as well. But, you know, whatever decision you make, I'm still gonna help, and I'm still gonna offer my services, so I don't really think you can make a bad choice. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, thank you very much, and as, as difficult as some of this is, and, and there's so many great candidates to fill this void, there's great people, and that's a blessing. The tough part is to make these decisions, and it's extremely tough.
I move that we close the discussion, at this point, on our candidates, I think we need to go ahead.
All in favor of closing discussion on our candidates, say aye.
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 Motion is now.
I move that we, uh, appoint Kristen Clark to fill the vacancy on Borough Council.
Second on that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Can we have ten or fifteen more minutes to talk about? You guys know how I'm gonna vote, and you know why, and I think everybody here knows why.
Okay, um, Linda, roll call vote, and just to clarify, this is a motion to.
Appoint.
Appoint.
Kristen Clark.
Clark as the, for the resolution to fill the council seat, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that is the motion on hand, Linda, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Zerfoss? Can I move on and go back, or do you want to?
Should we?
I'm gonna vote no.
Dr. Sanders, David.
Yes.
Ms. Penau.
No, but that's not too long, I have my eye on her for something.
Can you explain?
No, that, no discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Bartley.
No.
President Walton.
No.
Motion defeated.
You didn't represent the borough.
Wow.
Thank you for openness in government.
Okay. That was slick, gentlemen, that was slick.
I have one more comment, one more public comment before I leave. I'm taking, I'm just taking the privilege onto myself of saying, I don't know Mr. Simpson, but I'm not gonna come to council meetings and see the old Bobcats football team running my town, thank you very much.
Okay, um, continuing on.
So are we gonna fill the seat, or are we gonna just?
If the motion for.
Or are we just gonna put it, somebody in there, I mean?
If the, uh, motion for Mr. Zerfoss, his motion is desired to be brought back on the table, that motion needs to be made at this time.
Do I have a motion to bring Mr. Zerfoss's motion back to the table?
Can I thank you for bringing my own motion back?
Yes.
Earl makes the motion to bring his own motion back to table, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We got a second, discussion on that motion?
Are we kidding?
I still am asking, what rules are we using to run these meetings? These meetings are deteriorating down to nothingness. Because we, we change the rules to suit who's doing what. You say one thing, and turn around and do something else. I'm having some serious issues with what we are saying to our constituents as we run these, uh, meetings, like we're playing with Mickey Mouse or something. And I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it to be funny, but I'm, that's how ludicrous this is. And, and do we need copies of this or something, and that's why I keep asking you, are we running these meetings by anybody's rules, and legalism is different from running a meeting?
What, my understanding is, is that Borough Council has the right to adopt whatever rules it wants to conduct.
But we don't have any.
Absolutely, so that's why I've got to do this on the fly. We're trying to follow order here of some sort, that's what, nobody has stated.
But we're not following anymore.
Hold on, there is an order, I, you guys have the votes. I'm telling you what your options are as far as motions, we addressed everybody's motions, and you guys voted. That's the public procedure. As long as I get you guys to follow and make motions that you guys vote on, on issues, we are good. If you wanna follow Robert's Rules of Orders, you guys need to pass something saying that those are the rules that you wanna follow.
Please do.
That's up to them, okay? All I'm doing is telling you how to bring something to a vote. And there is a difference between substantive legal context and your procedures at these meetings, because I'm telling you how to get stuff in front of yourselves for a vote, because you guys are having a difficult time doing that.
I wonder why.
Well, I don't know why, but I came in here, and I'm telling you how you need to bring these things to a vote. The proper motion at this time, Mr. Zerfoss's, was placed on the table. We opened everything up for discussion according to your motion, and the vote didn't go your way.
It has nothing to do with the vote going my way, I can tell you, it's process, procedure, and fairness.
How is this unfair?
If the vote doesn't go my way, I understand that. What are we doing right here? Nothing.
You're welcome to tell.
I mean, Mrs. Forma walked out because of the issues, and did you hear what she said? We look like a bunch of idiots to the world now, because we can't do anything right, and it's the old boy system that's running things right now. That is not fair to the citizens who are sitting out here. It's not fair to the people who voted to put people on this council, that you have stacked the vote, and you got the old boy system, and I refuse to take that back, because that is exactly what's happening.
But see, that, that's what, and, and I understand your position, but you're talking about seven votes on council. If you feel it's an old boys' club, it's up to the voters to vote these people out of office. You're asking me about running a Borough Council meeting according to rules. That Borough Council meeting with legitimately elected people on this council is being run properly. That's what, if you're unhappy with who is on it, that is nothing I can control. The voters elected these people, and it was properly counted and everything else. And right now, we're in the middle of a motion that Mr. Zerfoss was brought back on the table, and the motion that needs a vote is to appoint Jamie Simpson to the empty seat on council. That's where we are.
So we're at discussion on that? Okay, um, it's kinda clear that that's, the candidate that has been chosen would be Mr. Simpson, and I mean no offense to Mr. Simpson at all, I happen to like the man immensely. He's a lot bigger than I am, and he's tall, I don't wanna make him angry. But I don't understand how we can sit here and pretend that what we're doing is in the best interests of the borough, when clearly the members of the borough that are here feel pretty strongly one way, I'd have to say. You people have all reviewed the information that we've had, you've heard from both of the people. To pretend that what we're doing is in the best interest, the way we're doing it, I think is ludicrous. I have to be honest with you, I think it's ludicrous, and I'm not talking about how we're, we're proceeding with this. It's clear, when you look and you use your logic, and you guys who have spoken individually, okay, and have discussed that, you guys all know what the deal is here. And everybody else is gonna know what the deal is here, pretty soon, okay?
That's fine, because my deal was Elaine Moore, and I'll be, I told you that when we had discussions, so I just went to my number-two person. And you knew my position when you and I had discussions. And I have not moved from that position, that's.
Can we hear why you picked Jamie over Kristen? I thought you had them tied for second.
No, I didn't, and I can show you where I have my first.
Again, my discussion.
No, 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 I know.
My discussion point is, and I, I have nothing against Mr. Simpson, I have the process and the procedure that's being used, and that's being misused, unused, whatever term you wanna use. Um, again, I would think that if someone who has some, um, business etiquette would at least have a letter in this package, I see, I see handwritten notes about some of the people. I don't even see a handwritten note about Mr. Simpson. Uh, how, the question then would be, how did his name get in the mix, in all fairness?
In all fairness, though.
They weren't required to do that.
They were not required to do that, and Jamie and I have spoken in length many times, as I know he's spoken with other council members, and nothing against Kristen with sending her resume, that's just what she chose to do. I don't really think that that is, um, a piece, it wasn't a requirement, so therefore, it's not part of the policy and procedure. If it was a requirement, and he didn't submit one, then I could say, hey, there's no way we could do that. But in all fairness, it was not a requirement, and, you know, I'll, I'll just say, Jamie was my second choice. I have no problem saying that, if, if it's, you know, I, I think either one of them would do very well. I, I just think that in talking to you all out there, you know what to do in two years. You know what you need to do in two years, and that's all that it's gonna require. So for the next two years, you come to these meetings every single time, you watch this, you see how things are occurring, you take notes, and you talk to your neighbors, and in two years.
It also seems to me that it's a problem that there aren't any requirements. I mean, to, that's what really gets me, is that there's, you, you know, you say, okay, people send your names in for this position, but you have no, you have no policy in place for assessing those candidates.
They have secret meetings.
That doesn't make any sense.
Well, in all fairness, though, I didn't have any requirements to become mayor, I know none of us up here really had any requirements.
And, and that is definitely something that I think should be looked into for future, you know.
But as of right now, in all fairness to Jamie, there are no requirements.
Okay, we got a motion, uh, Linda, could you have a roll call, call vote, please? And just so everybody's aware, the motion is to appoint Jamie Simpson to the vacant council seat.
Mr. Zerfoss?
Yes.
Dr. Sanders?
No.
Ms. Penau?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
No.
Mr. Bartley?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, now, we need to fill out the resolution.
Mrs. Clark?
As soon as we pass the resolution.
I apologize to you.
I don't think you made a bad choice, and I appreciate your consideration.
We need that resolution.
But I still want him on the.
The resolution's right there.